So, we'll go to item three, you don't have a forum, so no votes. Kevin Mahoney, are you ready for the Assistant Superintendent's report?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'd like to introduce to the committee-
You may want to use your mic.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce two committee, two vice presidents from Unibank Fiscal Services, our financial advisor, Lynn Foster to my left, and then Margaret Klein. We've invited them here tonight as they assisted in some of the data that we put together in the report that was distributed as part of the packet. And they're here also to talk about, to answer any questions the committee may have regarding any financial strategies to employ under the scenarios that we present tonight. So, I can just walk you through the presentation under the building project. The basis for this was out of demand from the member town, local officials asking for estimates on what the cost would be related to the different options that were being presented. There was requests that we see what the debt service cost would be projected, there was also requests to see what the total assessments would be. We were providing individual calculations of what some of the requests were, and as such, some of the assumptions from town to town were inconsistent. So, what we attempted to do with this report is to standardize the assumptions and show the impact so that everyone was seeing the same information. I think the other issue that we were hearing from folks was what would be the, what would be the impact under the current agreement, and what would be the impact under the revised agreement? So, we attempted to include that information here. So, it's based on very specific and consistent set of assumptions, and projections are based solely on those assumptions. This cannot be considered any type of guarantee, or certainty, or assurance of future costs, but rather, our best estimate based on the details as we understand them. The numbers are very preliminary, and I think it's important to look at them from that perspective. So, if we go to page, page three, pages three, four, and five basically show what would be the end of the three options. Page three is renovation, page four is renovation addition, and page five is the new. Some of the assumptions that we've incorporated are listed on the lower left-hand corner of the page, where we're looking at a growth of eight percent enrollment over the next four years. We're projecting what our assessments would be in fiscal '20 because fiscal '20 is when would be the first year with the bond issue, all principal interest would impact, would impact the assessments. Also, because we're basing it on an assumption of 628 students, we needed to build a model that reflected that 628. So, when we look at an eight percent enrollment growth, that would project to 525 in district students and 103 out-of-district students. The detail on how those students would be allocated is listed on page 19 of the report. So, the non-member tuition, which is factored in the revenue plan in the upper left-hand corner, is based on 125 percent of foundation with a two-year inflation rate. All of the other assumptions on state aid and transportation are based on two percent inflation rate as well, with a transportation rate of a rate of 60 percent. So, on the upper right-hand box, we're showing what the assessments would be based upon the assessment categories that we typically use to assess our members under the revised agreement, and in the lower right-hand corner, under the current agreement. Those are the assumptions on pages three, four, and five. On page six, we're looking at the repair-only options, the repair-only with the partial aid program improvements, and the repair-only with no aid program improvements. The thinking under this was that if there was a reluctance to issue a bond for $80, $85 million, that would be likely a reluctance to issue bonds greater than that number for this purpose. So, the other issue here is that these estimates were developed by a task force from the school building committee. And we used the data list cost estimates that was done as part of the repair option, as part of the feasibility study, and included soft costs and appropriate escalation costs to project where we thought these numbers would be over a 10-year duration. However, so it's looking at a drawdown of 10 percent every year on the total cost of the project, and included as a capital assessment rather than a debt obligation. However, it's important to note that to the extent that we do certain repairs under this phase repair program, whether it's the partial aid plan or the full aid plan, once we invest a certain amount of capital improvements over a certain window, three to five years, that will trigger certain requirements for us to comply with ADA codes and FIA codes and things of that nature. So, it may not be as smooth as just drawing out one-tenth for 10 years. So, there may be other strategies that may need to be employed that would have some bonding involved for certain pieces of the, certain pieces of this plan. But at least it just attempts to recognize that if we were to do this over a 10-year period, through a capital assessment, this would be the projection for what that would be. Appendix A, which is pages eight through 13, represents the detailed calculation on the capital assessment models as proposed under the revised regional agreement. Just looking at page eight, some of the things I'd like to highlight is the, there's a need to do the calculation under both the current method and the revised method because the ESCO lease program needs to be calculated under the current assessment until that is complete, until that is done. So, in the lower left-hand box, you'll see the calculation factor for the ESCO project, and then there's another box on the bottom of the page that shows what the assessment share would be for the building. The other issue you see in the middle, there's a box called capital allocation, where you see this gives the debt service for year one, which is the total debt service for the project based upon a 30-year, 30-year level debt, bond issue at a 3.5 percent interest rate. What we do is we offset that with any capital fees that we collect from out-of-district students, and under this model, we're looking at approximately 103 students, so that we do, we have a net debt service that would then be allocated. In the small box over on the right-hand side, it gives the calculation for the out-of-district debt allocation, in this case, under the renovation program. On per pupil cost basis, as we understand the new regulations that were just adopted last week, that would be roughly $9,000 for this particular project. So, the per pupil cost will obviously be determined by the scope of the project, but it's, again, based on the premise that it's a 628 student school. So, the details for the allocation are based on the three categories, the enrollment basis at 50 percent, the combined effort basis, which is 34 percent, and then the 1 percent capital contribution by each town. It considers all 16 towns and members of the district. On page nine, it just gives the detail on how the four-year rolling average would affect the, would affect each individual community's contribution, as well as the calculation factor that was used for the combined effort. In terms of the tax rate impact sheet, you'll find those under appendix B, page 15. I'm going to ask Lynn and Margaret to talk to that a little bit because they were helpful in developing this information for us. But I do want to point out one thing, and that is that when we provided the information to Unibank to calculate these numbers, it was based on our current enrollment now, not the projected enrollment that I used in the prior sheets. So, the debt service, the debt assessment is based on the current enrollment that we have now, so that better aligns with the, what we were able to do as far as calculating the tax rate impact on the median, the tax impact on median homeowner, so that the tax data was current with the current home. So, with that-
As Kevin said, we took the debt service on looking at, particularly on the renovation, actually, all scenarios that were presented, renovation, renovations and additions, as well as the new construction and the debt of the existing. The median home values were provided and verified by the individual assessors of those towns. And again, the impact of the residential tax base was based on current 2015 assessed valuations that were on each of the town's recap sheets. On the column, estimated tax impact per median house is based on that median home value that's on the left-hand side. So, as you can see, it would be $26.42 in the first year per assessed valuation of $476,700 home. And then the far-right column that says estimated tax impact per $100,000 is just a column that we added because it's easier for somebody to calculate their specific home value just by using the $100,000 home valuation. And again, we did those for the current method, the revised agreement, and per project, if you will. Is there anything else that you- So, it's a very straight formula going through, I mean, these are just very preliminary numbers right now as far as the debt service, proposed debt service consisted. We ran these as if the district issued the bonds all in one fell swoop. We haven't seen a cash flow yet, which would be forthcoming should the project get approved. And at that point in time, we really dive into what the structure would look like as far as the issuance of bonds, keeping in mind what the market looks like, where interest rates may be going, any type of arbitrage or tax codes that we have to adhere to to keep the tax exemption in compliance. But for right now, without, you know, just having rough numbers to go on, we ran it as if the district issued bonds, all of the bonds, at one time, and that would be the full impact. You know, that could change again. Rates could change, we ran things at three and a half percent. We all know that we've been in a great rate environment for the last few years, and, you know, the Fed has given us every indication that rates are going to start moving, and we've already seen some of that built into some of the issues that we've been selling into today's market. But, is there anything, Margaret, that you wanted to add?
No.
Any questions?
Yep.
I would ask that the projections that are done, are your projections done at a three and a half percent?
Yeah.
And I heard the date FY '20 before debt service would be imposed, so that 3.5 is today's interest rate?
It's today's rate, subject to change if you were in the market today. And if you were going to incur the interest cost in fiscal '20, as Kevin had alluded to, you would probably be in the market in fiscal '19, where then the next principal payment would be incurred, or the first principal and interest payments would be incurred in fiscal '20.
But whatever interest rate-
So, you'd be in the market, you know, probably in 2019, you know, assuming this is, this is the plan we're sticking to.
See, what, when would you be looking at approval, given the current schedule that you have of the bond? When would you issue the bond, and when do you expect it to be issued?
Well, I think what we look at is when a project is approved, and we looked at a cash flow, that the architect, design firms, we make available to us.
So, you're roughly looking at next year?
So, you know, would you be out in the mark, would you be out in the market sooner than 2019? And would, yeah, I mean, if that was the case, I mean, that's something we'd advise the district on as far as, you know, in a rising rate environment. I mean, you never want to chase the market, but the, you know, the reasonable thing would be is, you might want to issue this in phases, because it's such a large project, that you take a certain, you know, you look at that cash flow and you see what your needs may be over maybe an 18-month period, and you put that out in the market first. You know, you take whatever that amount is, you know, you look at all kinds of things, whether you want to issue the bonds as bank-qualified, and qualified meaning you don't issue any more than $10 million in the calendar year, and you look to see, you know, what the bank-qualified and non-bank-qualified interest rates look like, if there's, you know, if it's even feasible. And what we do have for many large projects is issued in pieces, as opposed to short-term financing. And of course, you can only, under the new SBA guidelines, the district can only issue their share of debt service. So, usually what happens is there is a tail, if you will, at the end, when you're waiting for the MSBA audit to be finalized, because you don't want to go into the bond market with your last piece, not knowing your exact cost. You don't want to finance the state grant piece.
Is it fair to say that the interest rate will be higher than 3.5? We're talking a year to two years out, and the Fed wanting to increase interest rates and so forth?
I mean, I think the three and a half percent right now, I mean, to say, is it going to be there, you know, is that going to be the rate, three years down the road, you know, four years down the road? It's hard to say. Luckily, we said rates are rising, I mean, I think we're all aware of that with everything that we hear and that we're seeing. But we were also saying that last year, the rates were going to rise, and we're still selling 20-year bonds at, you know, close to 2.5%.
It's hard to say. And again, that would be something to look at, if you decide, well, maybe if rates are still low enough, we could do a portion of it earlier, maybe under, maybe under the three and a half percent, and then maybe the second one you do, you're more closer to the 4%. So, when you're averaging them all together, it does come up to say the three and a half percent.
Thank you.
A quick comment or request. I presume this is a draft for future distribution, because I think it's pretty critical that we can't be saying the debt service is 5.6 million on one slide, and then turn around and run the calculation on a per household basis on 3.7 million. So, those numbers ultimately have to tie.
Do you want to explain the difference? There is a, there is a reason why that is a different number.
It's a fair point, Jack. It's, you know, again, it's basing it on the current enrollment, of course, it's a projection.
Understood, but I think that your presentation has to dovetail ultimately.
Yep.
And not to dwell on the rates, but you guys could look at what today's spot rate is for the 30-year treasury in 2019, and if that's significantly higher than today, you could-
You could benchmark it up, yep.
Yeah, I mean, that may be a way to, you know, that's what the market says, they think treasuries are going to be down there, and you can add whatever the spread is now to get to the three and a half. I don't know, I don't know if it improves with all the other uncertainty in these projections, I don't know if it improves the predictive value, but it is one way to address the what will interest rates be in the future.
I have a question over here.
Well, actually, it's a comment. In discussions in the past, it's been made clear, one reason we've qualified for the 3.5 is based on the superior ratings of our member towns. So, the onus is on our member towns to maintain those bond ratings so we can keep our rates down for this project.
Can I ask Kevin general questions?
I have a question about this. What do you mean by a general question? Any questions about this agenda is fine.
Thank you. The last example that you gave of the cost for the project would be without MSBA help. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And let's say that for some reason, we lost the MSBA grant today. All right. That doesn't mean that we would not come back and apply again, right?
Oh, I would think we would apply, yes, yes.
And instead of a six or seven-year period that attempted to get to this point, would it be fair to say that we could get back to this point with a different plan or program within a year or two years, or-
I have no basis in knowing if that would happen.
You do go to the end of the line.
Yeah.
Once you get back out.
It was 90%. I think they do look at us from some level of a need basis, but we would start at the end of the line, as I understand it.
So, then your last example is basically what? I'm not quite sure what it's saying. That we're just not going to get the MSBA money, MSBA money ever?
The assumption is that we would not get MSBA money through those two options, that's correct.
And what would be the conditions for that? Why wouldn't they, if we reapply, why wouldn't they get MSBA?
I'm not making this an assumption that it's an automatic. If we were to get the MSBA fundings, it would certainly be better. The assumption that we've been going with, and this was based from a report that was done by the task force that we brought back to the school building committee, is that we're assuming that we will be out of the MSBA program, and that it would be 100% borne by the district.
The only other comment I want to make is we're at a 40% reimbursement now, and if we, as of June 30th, if we don't approve, next year, if we don't approve a building project, we, and if we were able to get back in the MSBA project, we'd get 31%. So, that's why we came out with a report we did, that there's not a no-cost option. If the town is to turn this project down, then they're going to be facing a repair option that they're going to have to pay for.
And I'll go a little further than that. Even if eventually we tend to get back in the pipeline, and we don't know how long that would take, and even if it's a lower rate, the necessity of doing repairs may force our hand to act before we can get into the pipeline. So, there's a really good chance that even though on paper it's possible at some point in the future we will be in the pipeline, considering the condition of the building, and we've already been delaying in the hope of being reimbursed, it seems unlikely that we wouldn't have to make a fair number of these repairs before we are in the pipeline. So, I'd be very skeptical that at least some significant portion of that, even under the best circumstances, would have to be spent before we have an official project.
A perfect example is what's in our budget for the coming year, where there are capital projects for repair and improvements in the building that cannot be delayed, even though we optimistically hope that we've got a building project a couple of years out.
The other thing that you have to figure out is there's a trigger option, that once you, and Mary Ann, you might know the number, but once you do a certain percentage of the evaluation of the building, you're going to have to build, bring the building up the code. And that may mean, instead of a 10-year, which is what we're suggesting, you may have to do it all in four or five years without MSBA support, because you didn't have time to get back in.
And then Kimon.
I don't know, Kevin, I understand why you took today's current enrollment, or the October 14 enrollment, and projected it out. But I did look at the enrollments in the budget book, and there is, for some communities, a fair amount of variation year to year, that when you project that point in time out, to the extent that there are anomalies in '14, and I don't know whether there are, but you just exacerbate that by projecting out that point in time. I don't know whether people on the committee have an opinion. Seems to me that a better number to use is some sort of historic enrollment, whether it's five-year enrollment or 10-year enrollment, as the starting basis point from which you project these aggressive growth rates. But I think even if people say, no, we want to start with the '14 number, it would still be, I think, helpful as a matter of presentation to have what those five and 10-year averages are, so that communities can at least look at and understand how those numbers may be influenced by the current point in time swings in enrollment, either up or down.
Kimon.
Aggressive, Ford. Could you turn down your mic? This deadline. Deadline of MSBA approval, June 1st or June 3rd?
June 3rd of 2016.
And no ifs, ands, or buts about that deadline.
That's our understanding.
Current?
Yes.
Very clear. This flood.
Going back to the projected enrollments, and I was looking at the numbers on the four-year average page, I think it's 11, it happens to be in front of me right now. Are you looking at a percentage of the eighth graders in some year, or what accounts for the variation from year to year for a particular town moving forward?
It was really more a straightforward eight percent, eight percent enrollment growth. When we look at the total of the, the total number of eighth graders, I think it dovetails with the, with the presentation, we talked about our recruitment retention strategy. So, it was just basically using the same assumption and trying to move that forward. I think the most difficult thing about putting the model together was the enrollment assumption, frankly. It's such a driver in the cost per community, and to try and make some assumptions as to what those would be four years from now, by community, I found to be very difficult. But I think when you look at it in the aggregate, I think it was important that the model be based on a 628 model, because there's so many other factors that go into that, particularly the capital fees.
Cheryl, and then Dave.
I had the privilege of going to the first town building project presentation last night. The one significant takeaway that I had, and it was a very disturbing takeaway, even though it was somewhere in the back of my brain that existed, is one of the comments was, their child had friends that were very excited about coming to Minuteman from all the information they had been supplied, and participation in the junior high program. However, and this is the tell, these friends decided not to come to Minuteman because when they toured the school, these kids were appalled by the conditions they saw. And that is a direct effect on our efforts to increase enrollment from district towns. If we don't fix this building, our kids are not going to want to come and experience Minuteman.
Dave.
We're looking at an eight percent annual increase in enrollment. Last year, we lost about 20 member-town students, and over the last seven, six or seven years, it's actually gone down to about 30 or 40 students and so forth. And since I've been here six years, seven years, or whatever, they've always posted or required a 5% increase in member-town enrollment, and you've never done that. And I'm just going to say, an eight percent is very bullish. I mean, it's going to take, you know, perhaps you should use a 4% in your projections at some point, or closer to a reality.
I mean, it's going to take, you know, perhaps you should use a 4% in your projections at some point that are closer to a reality.
Okay, well, thank you very much for these, this first attempt to look at this.
I'm not done with my question.
Oh, okay, yeah.
May I?
That'll be my guess.
In your projections, you also include a capital, a capital fee. And that regulation, which just recently passed, really hasn't gone into effect as yet. How sure are you that that will affect the place?
The regulation?
Being put in place, but the regulation's being affected.
I think, you know, conversations, we've been pretty clear as to how we understand it. We understand that it would be based on a per pupil cost for the total amount of debt related to a MS, debt service related to an MSBA project that could be allocated to out-of-district students, with the exception of those students that are coming from a district that have exploratory programs of five or more. If that's the case, you can only charge 75%. But for the purposes of this analysis, and we have to get this analysis out because the member towns are demanding it, we made the assumption that it was a per pupil, straight per pupil cost, 100%, and that the 100 students would be coming from towns that don't have access to chapter 74 programming.
Okay, because looking through the minutes of the Board of Education meeting previous to February, Medford and I believe the Shore Collaborative said that they would, they would really oppose any capital fee. And Medford's a pretty powerful political town. Right, the same town as the DESE and so forth, and they think they've already gotten the tuition rate reduced. And they've also, you know, have been able to implement exploratory program restrictions and so forth. So, do you have a scenario where you do not have a capital fee as revenue?
No, because I based it on the vote of the Board of Education a couple of weeks ago that by, by regulation, now enables a capital fee. So, it's basically, and I'm basing it on the rules as I currently understand them today. I didn't make any, any assumptions that that may change.
And if Medford or Shore, you know, files a lawsuit, they could tie that up for a long time, I would imagine, for capital fee.
When, in doing any sort of analysis like this, obviously, there are some assumptions you have to make. And if you do different assumptions, you can end up with different numbers. But you have to put your stick in the mud at some point. And I think that from a starting point, you, to get the first idea of the ballpark of these numbers, this is a pretty good effort. Now, we've had a number of comments around the table here of possible improvements to the analysis. I'm not wise enough these matters to judge whether these would make the analysis better or not, but it's certainly something for you to take back with you, and I thank you very much for this.
I have one more question.
Last question?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Given that there are several towns, including Weston, Wayland, and Carlisle, that have already, you know, taken votes and so forth, that they're going to leave the district, wouldn't it be fair to take them out of this projection?
We haven't taken a vote.
Okay, you haven't taken a vote, thank you.
I think perhaps that's the reason why we haven't got any, with the exception of Weston, who's expressed their intention to leave, we really haven't had any definitive direction that certain communities are going to leave. And I think, given that the revised regional agreement hasn't been passed yet, I can't make the assumption that any community will be leaving at this point. So, I think that I'm, again, I tried to say in my, my opening comments that I made the assumptions and the model, I'm comfortable with the model under the assumptions as presented, but the assumptions can be challenged. And to the extent that there are less towns in there, that would have to be factored in as that, as those, as those situations develop. But right now, that's not the case.
Well, Wayland, as my understanding, they did take a vote, a non-binding vote to leave in the past, their town meeting.
I believe Oxborough did too.
And Carlisle and Weston took a vote. Can I complete my statement while I have the floor? Would you please be quiet?
Oh, Mr. Min, hey, Dave, come on.
No, I'm doing your job.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, David.
Will you please create order?
Be polite to the member, okay? Don't tell her to be quiet.
I will tell you to do your job, and you, I have the floor and I should be the speaker.
And that's great, but you know what? It is, it is not up to you to be rude to another member. That is not, that is, well, my job is not to be rude to the members at the table. So, be polite in your interactions with the member.
Okay, may I continue?
Yes, yes, well, yes, you may.
Thank you. Carlisle and Weston both took votes to pass the regional agreement with the understanding that they would want to leave the region. And my town, Sudbury, is intending to vote for the regional agreement changes with their intent to leave. They also explored other schools, as have other member towns. So, I mean, it's a fact, and it's becoming a bigger fact every day, and I apologize.
Ms. Banks.
So, last night, we had the first presentation in the town of Acton. And, you know, to your point about scenarios, some of these issues came up. But I think what townspeople are looking for is they understand that there is an unlimited universe of assumptions that can be made about this project, that there are a lot of moving parts. I think what people appreciated, and I thought that was reflected, was that we did give a set of assumptions and we said exactly what criteria we had used and that we had not. The issue came up, what if towns leave, and we indicated that we did not included that. So, I think what we're offering people is that they can look at a set of costs, which I think is still, you know, the absolute dollar number is still a rough number because of the stage that we are at in this. And what we are doing is offering people, I mean, I think what you need to understand is why are you giving people this data? And what you're giving them, this data for, is to show them a cost, a comparison of what the different models would look like. So, if you went with option one versus option five, this is the differential that it would cost. So, whatever the final cost is, option one is probably going to be this, a less expensive option. So, I mean, you're looking at ranges, so you need to really look at what is the purpose. We also want towns to begin to see some numbers that give them a sense of what this is going to cost their taxpayers. And they understand better than anybody that, of course, these are ranges and that, of course, the numbers are going to change as the project finalizes.
We are getting far from the, far from the topic at hand. The topic at hand was a presentation of this. It's not a debate on what's likely to happen with the member towns or whatnot. We all know that this presentation has been perfect because future events are going to dictate change. There can be changes in interest rates, there can be changes in which member towns stay or leave, none of which has been determined yet. There are going to be lots of changes to this and lots of different ways to make the assumptions. But from a starting point, a first glance at it, I consider this to be a very useful document. A big question in my mind is, what is the next scenario you should come up with? And I think that you will take the suggestions that have been around this table, all the suggestions into consideration, and start thinking about what the next, more realistic set of assumptions is and at what point you should present the next scenario. And I'm sure you're going to hear more comments from these people and from the public. And I'm sure we're going to see another draft in the not-too-distant future. In the meantime, this is a decent starting point to at least give us, for the first time, ballpark numbers. Unless it's really relevant to this, I'm not allowing it.
It is a suggestion that needs direct follow-up to what you've been talking about. Because this, because this committee has to make its decision in May about our preferred option. And we are out here collecting feedback, just from last night, from our communities. I'm thinking that the appropriate time to do another update, not to waste this time in the interim, would be shortly before our meeting in May, so that we could look at it then and maybe you've got some new insights that you've heard from your towns. We'll have an interim discussion and able to look at it as well. So, I would not recommend that Kevin and his staff, and I'm doing a lot of manipulations on this in the interim.
In the meantime, without objection-
No, no, I have a question that's very specific.
A question's very specific to this?
Very. I think Jack reads this. Are these, are these public, so that-
Public documents, they were released at this meeting.
We'll have that with us.
We'll have this with us. We're not going to say, oh, it for a later iteration or something.
No.
Thank you.
Is it very specific to this agenda item and short?
Absolutely. I would suggest, to your point, that this is the first iteration, that we be very careful to make sure that the Rev. references on these pages are consistent with each packet. Because I'm flipping through, in the first few pages, reference Rev. 6. However, further on, the spreadsheets reference Rev. 5. Now, the assumption is that these, this material didn't change from 5 to 6. But I think going forward, if we keep distributing this to the stakeholders, we have to be very careful that that CAD reference remains consistent to what they report.
Without objection from the school committee, considering that our guests are here now for item 4, I would recommend that we take item 4 out of order unless there's an objection. No objection, item 4, school building report. Ford Spalding, who just left for a minute, but he'll be back. Mary Ann Williams, who is here, yes.
Jeff, I just wanted to wrap up by-
Oh, there's another comment you have?
Just responding that we'll incorporate some of these, some of these ideas that were suggested. And I'd also like to thank Jack Weiss, he took the time to go through it and offered some other suggestions from a style and presentation point of view. And I appreciate your comments.
That's very good, and thank you, Jack Weiss. So, who started the presentation there, Mary Ann? Can you start that, or we have to wait for Ford to do that?
Well, I was going to suggest we could either wait for Ford or we do, we do have a guest from the state who was coming here that-
Jason, okay, get started.
That that might be more appropriate to-
Very good, thank you. Three-minute recess. You're coming out of the night now?
I think it's great, but what happened to the left side of the board? I don't know if I made that, I could have. We could save him for the big time.
I just got a chance to read your email. To answer your question about those two young ladies that were on the video last night, those were two of the team leaders for the bureaus in STEM. No, but the girls were good. With a few exceptions, like the Grease kids. He's paying the bills from his Minuteman experience. He's one of those hired, hired husbands in New York City, you know? So, if you go by the GM's bookcase, you hire a husband, he comes and puts them together. And that's how he's paying the bills, he stands to be in the way.
We can be, we're all together, so, Kimon. Come on, Matt. Who's going to introduce our current speaker?
I can do it.
Let me, I think, let me just start out by saying, I think it's important that we, as school committee members and building committee members, know what our role is as we talk about this building project. And our role is not to be out campaigning, selling, we're not going to be raising money, we're not going to be doing all that kind of thing. It's to give the straight facts and answer questions to our communities. And I think a little bit of training is probably a very good idea to just know exactly what our role is.
My name's J.C. Tate, I'm the communications director at OCPF. That means that I do our website, we have a Twitter account, so if you guys are on Twitter, you can follow us on Twitter. And I do our YouTube videos and our newsletters and whatnot. But it also means that I'm the press spokesman, the media spokesman in our office. So, I always like to say, you never want to see your name and my name in the same news story. It's never good, you know? You have some local paper around here, thanks. Writing stories about this issue, trust me, there will be people in the community, some of- Yeah. It's fun sometimes to go on our website. We're all about disclosure. Your candidates out there and also some political action committees are raising and spending money and our office is responsible for taking that information of them raising and spending money and putting it on a website for the public to see. So, you know, if you were to go on our website and type in Lexington or Dover or Lincoln and you search for contributions, even expenditures, you'll, you'll see people from your community making contributions. Maybe some of you have made contributions to candidates. That's what we're all about, is the disclosure portion of it. We have about twenty-six hundred committees filing with our office and we have a team of auditors and they just go through these thousands of reports every year, looking at these reports, auditing them. On the local level, you'll have ballot question committees to forward against this eventual debt exclusion or, or tax override that will be owed. And they'll be raising and spending money, putting it on the same OCPF forms, but instead of filing with us, they're going to file it in all sixteen town halls at the, at the town clerk, clerk's offices. So we'll get into that more as we go along. That's basically what we do. We also have a municipal auditor who goes from town to town auditing reports. So if our municipal auditor comes to your towns, they will see these ballot question reports that are going to be filed. By the way, this lasts about thirty, thirty-five minutes, just in case you're wondering. Important ground rules, public employees, public buildings, and public resources. You know, ninety-nine percent of what we do is the disclosure portion of it. But there's a small sliver of the campaign finance law that sort of delves into the ethics part of, of, of what we do. And, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight. I want to talk about public employees. This is where a lot of communities trip up when they're dealing with debt exclusions. Public employees, who are they? Public employees are individuals who are employed by the state, county, or municipality and they're compensated. These are your school teachers, your police officers, your firefighters, you know, the part-time janitor at your local community college, myself, state workers. Anyone who gets a paycheck from the state, county, or municipality is a public employee. Now, I'm told you're only compensated for free cookies on meeting night. That does not make you a public employee. Even though you're appointed here to this board, as appointed members who are not compensated other than cookies, you are not public employees according to the campaign finance law. Superintendent is though, all the teachers here, and they're prohibited from soliciting or receiving campaign contributions directly or indirectly. They have to stay away from the money. So now this begins a long process of frustrating public employees in the room like superintendents and principals who say, okay, Jason, you say we can't do this, but we also can't raise money. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of can'ts. I'm going to try and give you a few of the cans too, so it's all not, don't, 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 don't. There will be many things that your community can do, well, several things that a community can do or a school community can do. But there are going to be a lot of don'ts, so we'll just get into them right now.
Jason, quick question.
Yes.
An elected man who receives a small stipend.
Yeah.
Two thousand dollars, is that, you know, a year, is that, does that fall into a public employee or an elected official?
Yeah, that's a good question. Because these laws are written by elected officials, they exempt themselves. So all elected officials are exempt. So if you're a school committee member and a town, let's say it is the Lexington School Committee, there's an elected school committee there, and for some reason they're interested in this Minuteman thing, they would be able to solicit and receive. So what is a solicitation or, or receipt of campaign contributions? A receipt is the actual receipt of money. You know, there, many times with issues like this, a PTO or, or some, you know, some people in the community might start up a vote yes committee. And they might come to a basketball game at the high school and they see, and they see someone like you, I'm sorry, and they see a, a public, you know what? Strike that. I got ahead of myself a little bit. Sorry. A solic, a, a receipt of campaign contributions would be maybe the school principal being at a basketball game. And someone sees them and they know that the school principal is involved with the vote yes committee and they try and hand a, a check to the public employee. That's someone receiving a check, a public employee and they're prohibited from doing so. We don't see a lot of that. People don't really do that. What we do see is the actual solicitation, the verbal or written solicitation. I'm a school teacher. Maybe you're at the high school here. I really want the new school. So I sit down on my laptop on a Sunday, halftime at a Patriots game, I call up Facebook and say, hey, I'm a teacher at the Minuteman. It's a great school, but you know what? That building is just not good enough for those kids. We need a new school. You know, please show up the vote yes committee on Friday night. They're having a meeting, it's twenty dollars a head, the money's going to go toward trying to get this thing passed. Someone's going to see that and they're not going to like it and they're going to report it to OCPF and we're going to say, yep, that's a violation because it's a public employee who solicited by inviting people to a fundraiser. And that's the kind of, those are the kind of complaints that we receive in OCPF and what we see most often with public employees. Public employees may not host a fundraiser. So there might be a vote yes committee out there and a teacher who has a nice house said, you know what, you can have the fundraiser at my home. I'd be prohibited. May not help people to be targeted for fundraising. Maybe I'm the head of this teachers' union and I have to list a lot of teachers here in the school and I give it to the vote yes committees, they call and they're all good for twenty bucks of these. That's indirect solicitation by providing a list. And then of course, treasurers, public employees cannot be treasurers of political committees. And then elected officials are exempt. So that, in a nutshell, is what public employees cannot do. Any questions about that?
That's all restricted to fundraising. That teacher on the Facebook at the Patriots game could say, I hope you really vote yes for this. Would that be?
That's right. That would be fine.
Just the fundraising aspect, that's the conflict.
Public employees cannot solicit or receive, but they can give. A teacher could give unlimited amounts of money to the vote yes committee or the superintendent or the principal. They always get hit up, sorry. You might get hit up for these vote yes. They can give, they can attend events, they just cannot solicit or receive campaign contributions.
So it's not inhibiting the freedom of speech or, or go right to your opinion and just state your opinion. It's just about how you, how you do it and fundraising.
That's right. They can, you can speak out, you can go on Twitter and say, vote yes. That'd be fine. On your own private Twitter account. Government buildings. It's similar to public employees in that there's a prohibition on soliciting or receiving campaign contributions in buildings used for governmental purposes. This building here, this room, they're campaigning. The PTO or the vote yes committee would not want to have a fundraiser here in this room. That doesn't happen. So where could these committees trip up? The committees could trip up by having a meeting here and saying, you know what, we should invite every state rep to our vote yes meeting. It's going to be a fundraiser. It's going to be ten dollars a head, a spaghetti supper. If these state reps show up, then guess what, you know, we might get some support from the community, maybe the newspapers will show up, take photographs. Let's send invitations to the state reps. So the volunteer number three says, okay, I'll do it. They send invitations to the state rep, well, they send it to the state house. It's open to the state house and the secretary for one of the state reps doesn't want this thing to pass because his property taxes are too high already. So they photocopies it and send it to OCPF, we open up a case and there's a big headline. That's how that thing, type of thing works. So invitations should be sent to residential addresses is, is the key here. Use of government buildings as a return address or contact number for buying tickets to a fundraiser. Yeah, the vote yes committee shouldn't have, where we've, shouldn't have the address of the school as the return address for sending contributions. Displaying posters or flyers. Maybe the vote yes group has a flyer that has a bunch of information, you know, why everyone should vote yes and at the bottom it says, to donate to the committee, send a letter, a check to this address. And it gets posted at the library, the senior center, and on the post, on the, on the board here at the school. That'd be prohibited, it's a written solicitation in a building used for governmental purposes. Now, when we talk about this, we're talking about the actual four walls of this government building, this high school. If the vote yes group is having a conversation in the parking lot and let's say somebody to go on, on vacation, they can't make it to the fundraiser, so they walk up to the group and say, can't make it to the fundraiser, but here's my twenty dollars. Can they take it in the parking lot? The answer is yes. The restrictions only on the four walls of the government building. Or this one, it looks like about eighty walls. And all sorts of directions.
Jason, I actually was at an event and there was an elected official, we were having this event in a public building, and this person was new to the imposition and a supporter came to this event and was so enthusiastic about supporting them, they wrote out a check and handed it to them for their campaign. The person on the other end had to turn down that check because they wanted to make this transaction while they were standing in a public building.
It, it does seem kind of silly, but we've heard of these stories as well where people, people try and hand them checks, you know, at the basketball games or some event. It's, it's, seems silly, but they have to, sometimes they say, can we just step outside and hand it to me out there? You know, it's, it's actually within the four walls of the government building where that's prohibited.
I would think it was a library, a public building?
Yes. Senior center, library.
The conference isn't.
I'm sorry, it depends which town. Some libraries are owned by private corporations.
If, even if it is a private building, if it contains town or state workers, so if those people are town employees, then it would be considered a town building. I live in, I mean, I work in a twenty-one-story building that's privately owned, but it's just full of state workers, top to bottom. That would be considered a government building, so soliciting could happen. Oh, by the way, I came up with an idea for you guys. When I went to use the restroom, restroom over here, the ceiling was saggy and everything like that, you would be, speaking, you guys would be able to like make a video probably of that kind of stuff and that would work out very fine. But I can see your need for a new building. That's what I'm trying to get at. Would you like to donate? Now they want a new school building. Now I see why. All right. So that's, that's it for public employees and public buildings, unless you have any last questions. Now we're moving into the meat of it. The Anderson decision. So the Anderson decision, back in the seventies, the city of Boston appropriated about a million dollars to support a ballot question. It had to do with property taxes, reclassification of it. And some voters in town said, taxpayers in town said, hey, that's not fair. I pay taxes, I don't want it to go toward a ballot question that I'm against. They went to court and the court decided in favor of the taxpayers and that's where the decision was made, that public resources cannot be used for campaign purposes. It's not really in the campaign finance law. There's a little portion of the campaign finance law. It's section twenty-two A and it talks about, you know, if a city or a town or a school or government entity makes expenditures for a political purpose, then they have to file this twenty-two A form. At the very end, it's a sentence that says, nothing contained herein shall be construed as authorized in the expenditures of public monies for political purposes. And so our office has been given the responsibility to administer the court decision combined with this half a sentence in twenty-two A to govern these public resources and things. So that's why when I said at the beginning, there are a lot of gray areas, there are a lot of gray areas. It's not just spelled out black and white in the law. So if something comes up, give us a call.
Okay. We've got town meeting warrant articles. The school generates materials to distribute at town meeting to support our position. The school's making the copies. Isn't that us using public resources for a campaign?
Might be a good chance to go like this, town meeting. Generally, our office is pretty conservative when it comes to the rules. We try and be extra careful. And so our general counsel in our office, our director would say, you know what, don't use town resources to pay, to distribute materials even for a town meeting. But technically, depending on the timing and the circumstances and some of the, you know, the timing of the election compared to the timing of the town meeting warrant article, there are some situations where public resources can be used to distribute information for town meeting and there's no reporting requirement, there's no prohibition. But if one of your member towns is going to do that or if the school department's going to do that, I suggest you call OCPF and, and get permission in writing from the general counsel. Seems very firm. So, yeah, so this slide here, town meeting. Anderson applies to elections, not to town meeting actions. So we get questions sometime. Can we, can we send out a, a robocall to our parents? We have the, you know, we have the robocall list for the snow days and all that. Can we just blast out something to the parents about, you know, go to town meeting and vote yes on this, on the budget issue? Technically, yes, that's okay. But our office, before you do that, would like to see what you would say and, and the timing of it as well would come into consideration. Then we will, we'll send you something in writing, perhaps an email that gives you either a red light or a green light. So what ask is that? You do that if you could?
How quick is the trigger?
Usually within a couple of hours. Yeah. So distribution, that's the key for these Anderson issues. That's what we're looking for. When we get complaints, we, we usually say, okay, what happened? What, what sort of public resource was used? It usually comes down to distribution. If it's distributed and it's unsolicited, publicly funded, and it deals with an election issue, that's when our red flags start popping up. And we're going to get into the details on what that means here and in a couple of slides. We always get this question, what about objective material? I mean, in the mail, I always get something from William, from Secretary of State Galvin and it talks about, you know, the bottle bill. And like if the bottle bill passes, this will happen. If it fails, this will happen. You know, why can't we create something like that? The, the court in Anderson said that even objective material is prohibited. Towns and schools and school communities cannot push that information out even though they think it's fair and balanced. There is an exception though. A, a community, I think it would be difficult for a sixteen-member community to do this, but a community can, if you have a school, a general counsel, they can distribute materials unsolicited if they adopt the provisions of chapter fifty-five, section eighteen B. That's not something that we administer. The elections division administers that and that's the, that's the phone number. So if your community does want to distribute objective material, you can look into that.
But the exception is the warrant even if it has recommendations, correct?
The exception is the warrant, yes, yes. But again, you call OCPF so that our general counsel can determine the timing and the content of what you're going to send out.
I think where, where we, where in my experience with, with that, that sort of gray area we're talking about is when you know in advance that an article that's going to town meeting also requires a valid election, like an override, before it can happen. And there you're walking kind of a narrow line.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, if, if it's a simple thing where it's only going to town meeting, we get those calls, yeah, you can distribute stuff. If it's town meeting and then a month and a half later there's an election, we're going to be more cautious.
Like it could be mushy when we get to the question of debt exclusion, how a town would want to handle.
And I think something that we might forget, I don't think I'm mistaken, that it doesn't matter whether you're opposing or, or supporting or opposing a particular position on an election, you still can't use the public resources.
Supporting or opposing, that's right. That's right. So permissible distribution, before we get to the don't, don't, don't. Permissible distributions. It's information that can be requested by a member of the public. So you're in the superintendent's office, someone from the community calls out and says, hey, you know, what's up with this school building plan? Can you send me what you have? Someone from the office can take their time to put it in an email or put it in an envelope and send it out to that person, that single person, because they asked for that information. Notification of an upcoming election. We get this call sometimes too. We have a robocall system. We use it to, to cancel school for snow days. Can we use that to promote the election? No, but under some circumstances, you can send out information about the time, date, and place of an election. So on election morning, the robocall can go out to say, we just want to remind you, today is the vote for the new school. You can vote at this location and during these hours. Before you do something like that though, please send the script to our office for pre-approval before it goes out. When you do those sorts of things, it generates a lot of complaints and so it would be good for you to have something in writing from OCPF that you can provide to, to people who complain with that.
For example, on something like that, I would assume you would have to robocall every household in town, not just school-related households.
It's a good question. I put a little note here, call the Ethics Commission. We say it's okay just to blast it out to the school community, but ethics, ethics may have an issue. So permissible distributions, before we get to the dumb, dumb, dumb. Permissible distributions. It's information that can be requested by a member of the public. So you're in the superintendent's office, someone from the community calls out and says, "Hey, you know, what's up with this school building plan? Can you send me what you have?" Someone from the office can take their time to put it in an email or put it in an envelope and send it out to that person, that single person, because they asked for that information. Notification of an upcoming election. We get this call sometimes, too. We have a robocall system. We use it to cancel school for snow days. Can we use that to promote the election? No, but under some circumstances, you can send out information about the time, date, and place of an election. So on election morning, the robocall can go out to say, "We just wanna remind you, today is the vote for the new school. You can vote at this location during these hours." Before you do something like that, though, please send the script to our office for preapproval, before it goes out. When you do those sorts of things, it generates a lot of complaints, and so it would be good for you to have something in writing from OCPF that you can provide to people who complain with that.
For example, on something like that, I would assume you would have to robocall every household in town, not just school-related households.
It's a good question. I put a little note here, "Call the Ethics Commission." We say it's okay just to blast it out to the school community, but ethics may have an issue with that, and say, you know, you need to open it up. But they have, it's a case-by-case basis with them. So before you do a robocall, and help bureaucratic this, but you have to call our agency, and you have to call the Ethics Agency, we might have conflicting answers. So, sorry. Speech versus actions. You know, I took a call once where, you know, one of the school committee members, you know, called up and said, "Hey, you know, all the other school committee members, they're talking to the media, they're telling people that they should vote yes, and, you know, we shouldn't be able to do that, right? We can't tell people how to vote." You can tell people how to vote, you know, especially elected officials, they can say whatever they want. You can take a sign, even, you know, a public, even a principal or a superintendent, they can say, "We need this thing to pass, this building's falling apart, we need this thing to pass." They can speak these things, they can talk to the newspapers. That's fine, they can go on Twitter, Facebook, however they would like to do it. They can talk about how they support this project or oppose it. Permissible actions of appointed officials. So appointed officials are republic employees, not elected officials. They can take a position on a ballot question, prepare material concerning a ballot question. They basically have to prepare material, I mean, they wouldn't be doing their jobs if they just said, "Hey, let's just, I don't know, let's pick a number." I mean, they have to come up with something. They have, they can even explain, you know, if this school's not fixed, they might lose accreditation, or whatever it is. Hold public meetings and forums. There can be a public meeting where, you know, the community can come to perhaps the high school auditorium or something, and, you know, a school official can go through the steps and explain why something like this is required. Distribute materials at those meetings. You know, so if three hundred people show up, you can give out three hundred packets to those three hundred people with materials about the issue. Talk to the press and work for or contribute to a ballot question. So public employees, you know, all the teachers, police officers, firefighters, they can work for the vote yes committee. They just can't solicit or receive contributions, and they have to do it on their own time.
How about people who get three coupons? None of us get, this is, we are all, we're all paid. But we, none of us get paid for what we do.
That's right.
So what rules are we under?
You're not under, you're under the rules of just a regular civilian. Just a person, they can support or vote, they can raise money, they can, unless you're a public employee in another life, you know, in another job.
Oh, yeah, okay, but, and?
So, yes.
I am.
You are, yeah, so you'd be restricted from, you'd be prohibited from soliciting or receiving.
But 'cause of her other job, not?
Because of her other job, that's right.
And I think we still couldn't use the school resources to do those things.
Yeah, separate issue, yep, but that's right. If you have access to the school's copier, you wouldn't wanna go to the copier, make a thousand copies, and say, "Vote yes," and pass them out, you'd still be restricted from doing that. Prohibited actions. Unauthorized distribution of material. You know, this happens from time to time. The school principal, you know, they have access to a bunch of parent emails perhaps, and, you know, she decides, "You know what, we really need this thing to pass. You know, I was just trying to flush the toilet, it's broken, I'm sick of it, we need a new school." And she might sit down and say, "Vote yes on the new school, you know, this one's falling apart," and blast it out to the parents. That would be prohibited because it's an unauthorized distribution to people, and it's unsolicited. Improper support of ballot question committees. She wouldn't wanna say, you know, "All teachers, on your break, we need you to stuff envelopes for the vote yes committee so we can mail them out later. Don't worry, we're gonna use private post, no, that'd be to use teacher time for a political purpose." I put that in there because it happened. So this stuff happens. Fundraising for ballot question committee, I think we've gone over that.
Jason, the unauthorized distribution, who is the authorizer to permit that?
It's not authorized.
No, but who would be the, what would be the entity that would give you the authorization to distribute that?
No entity would give you the authorization to distribute. There's that one exception where an objective flyer could go out stating both sides, but otherwise, that's it.
I think what he's saying is that the distribution of material is not authorized by the.
Yeah, it's not authorized by the school department. All that stuff's done by private political committees. Public meetings and hearings. Speech of officials is unrestricted at these meetings. You can distribute materials. Just a quick note, we had a case once where they had this public meeting, the superintendent got up, talked, had a slideshow, went through all the issues. Three hundred people showed up, they were expecting a thousand, so there were seven hundred extra copies. And so the PTO just took the extra copies and went out and distributed it to the public. That's the, we determined that was the use of public resources for a campaign purpose, and prohibited. So if you do have a public meeting, you know, it's one copy for one person. Equal access to city facilities, equipment, and supplies. The court determined that the use of public resources is prohibited unless equal access is granted to all sides of the issue. So if the vote yes committee isn't able to use the Paul Revere Room for its Wednesday night meeting so it can strategize, no fundraising talk, but can strategize, then the vote no committee should have equal access to this room. That's what we see most often, is the use of facilities for committee meetings. However, we have gotten this question, the leafletting, we get that a lot. The vote yes group or the PTO, they might have privately created leaflets, and they say, "Hey, you know what, we wanna distribute these to the kids. I know the teachers can't put it in the backpacks, but we wanna be there, and we'll give it to the kids as they get on the bus." And they get on the bus, and they go, and they go, "Well, you're a high school, I don't know if you have buses, but..." "But you do, you have buses, okay." And they'll give it to the kids, and they can take it on the bus and take it home. Well, that's okay, actually, so long as all sides are given access. So obviously, you know the PTO lady who's giving out flyers as kids get on the bus, but you might not know the vote no guy on, you know, some far-flung community who wants to be here, too, and hand out his flyers, you might not wanna give them access. So it's a decision really that's being made by the building administrator.
Jason, one question. You talked about the PTO taking the stack of extra copies. However, you made a prior comment that said if the superintendent got a phone call and someone has materials on request, they could give. Now, could that stack of three hundred be set aside, and if the public asked for a copy?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
They could be providing, and then more to the point is, I know that I've been approached by pollsters saying, "Can I give you a copy of this material? Is that acceptable, rather than just showing it in their face? Can I give you this flyer?"
Yeah, that, yeah, I get that, too, but that's probably paid for by a private entity.
Right, well, you don't know that, 'cause you don't know to the person if that can be provided.
Yeah, well, that, well, if they are giving you something that was produced by a school department, then that would be a violation. As far as your question about, I mean, three hundred people showed up, we had a thousand copies, what do you do with the other seven hundred? Yeah, you could put them right there on the desk at the superintendent's office, and when people come in, you know, if they want, if people wanna take one, they can take one. How about websites, you know? In the seventies, I don't think the court knew what a website was. So we had to adjust a little bit, and we've determined that a website's sort of like a community tack board, where people can put announcements up there. So we have said that if you have information about your school building project, you can post it to a municipal website or a school website. I was just dealing with a question like this in North Attleboro, and I was looking at this with a colleague today. On North Attleboro's page, on the front page of North Attleboro, they have three bullet items that talks about the school, I mean, the tax override that they wanna pass at a ballot question. And that's exactly where someone would go if they're looking for that information. I'm a resident of a city. If there was an upcoming ballot question, and I wanted information, I'm going to the website. So it's more passive than blasting out information. I'm actually seeking it out, so that's okay. So you can put information on a website. We just wouldn't want it to look like a campaign website. We had a situation where we were like, "Oh, yeah, you can put information on the website." And then there was a complaint, we were like, "Okay, let's see what it is." We went, and there was this vote yes thing that was flashing in people's eyes, it looked like the casino in Vegas. So, yeah, you'd want to, you know, keep it, not to, you wouldn't want it to appear to be a campaign website. Any questions on websites at all? Yes?
So if it's up there as informational, that's okay?
That's right. And the letter, and there could even be.
You say advocacy, too?
Yeah, advocacy. So, you know, let's say the school administration, they're like, "You know what, we really need this to pass." And so a letter is crafted, where they say, you know, "This is the situation, this is why we think it should pass." And that statement is put on the website, then we would even say that's okay. Yes, Mary?
What about frequently asked questions? Because we're getting questions from a lot of different places.
Oh, yeah, that'd be helpful.
Take the question and answer it. You can post that, you can distribute that.
Not distribute, but you can post it.
You can post it, okay.
You can distribute it at a meeting. I thought I saw another name, okay.
Yeah, forgive me if I missed this, but if this is like a bulletin board, what's the equal access? And if somebody wanted to send a statement that was in opposition or alternate view, is there an obligation to post that?
No, only if, if it's a school department material on the website, fine. But if you also have a section like, "Click here to see the information from the vote yes committee," then you'd be required to allow space to the vote no committee. But if it's just the school department putting information on, no equal access issues arise. Email, wanna watch out for email. Teachers, unions, and school administrators, and they all have access to this, to email. I don't know, do you guys have email accounts? From this school? Okay, you wouldn't want to use that email account to advocate for this question, saying on an email from your Minuteman account, saying, "Hey, you know, make sure you vote yes," or, you know, "Please come to the fundraiser." You know, even volunteers would not wanna use those public resources to blast out emails. Any questions on email?
You could use your own private email account to blast out emails.
You could. Where would you get the list? If you wanted to blast out just your friends' list, or?
No, I go around, I don't know, I look at license plates and cars if it's listed. Somehow I get a list.
Somehow you get a list, yeah.
I know all the town officials, I know all the people on town meetings, because I can get that information online, and I blast it out all of them through my personal email. "We don't like the Minuteman Project, we like the Minuteman Project."
That's fine, for you in personal. And I bring up the list because that is an issue. You know, schools, a lot of times, they collect email addresses, and parents, you know, have this list. A public record, and there's always the question, you know, "Can we take this list and give it to the vote yes committee?" Yes, but if you do that, then there's equal access to that list, you also have to give it to the vote no committee.
Now, I've got a perfect example of that. I've been the, I've had the dual roles for six years. And then last year, the stakeholders in my town disagreed with the position I took on behalf of Minuteman on a warrant article. So I consciously made the decision last year, even though I had been told, I had permission to use my town email address for Minuteman business previously, I consciously made the decision to no longer send Minuteman emails from my office email address.
I think we're getting into Hillary Clinton world here. But, yeah, that's, probably, yeah, you probably wanna use private email, you know, instead of the Minuteman stuff, unless you're just replying to someone about something. I mean, if someone writes you and says, "Hey, what do you think, what do you think about this project, this tax override?" You could reply using the Minuteman, but it's the blasting out of unsolicited emails that we're looking for. Other electronic means, we talked about this, the reverse robocall. If you do it, call us, let us check and approve your script. Newsletters. I always hate to talk, tell this story, 'cause it always really makes a sound, right-handed bureaucrats, but we had a case once where there was a school department, and every month, they put the PTO minutes in the newsletter. The newsletter got mailed out to the parents. Well, one month, the PTO happened to talk about the tax override issue. And so when the minutes were printed, it talked about all the different issues, and then it said, "Oh, and by the way, the PTO supports the upcoming override for a new high school." That went out to everyone. A complaint came to OCPF, and our office determined that's a violation, as the use of public resources in newsletter, and, you know, public resources such as printing and postage, and concern a political issue, the override. So just something to look out for, if you do have a school newsletter that goes out, either by email or by snail mail.
Are PTOs covered by the open, are open anymore, are they provided by that, or not?
I don't know that, that's outside the scope bar. Can't be financed.
There's something in trouble with that one. If the PTO minister, or this is one of the ministers, that the PTO voted, such and such had to be disallowed. If the PTO, if the wording were, "Support the ballot question," that's one thing. But on the other hand, it says, "PTO voted at an act during this meeting." I could see that would be that, that's true, but it's news.
Yeah, if it was that simple, our investigators would take that into account. The exact language, I'm not sure. I don't think that's gonna raise a lot of red flags, but we would say, "Don't do it if it hasn't happened yet." If it already happened, we'd try and resolve it, probably with a very minimal. I don't know how we'd resolve it.
I'm going to be asked by some Lincoln Squirrel, the small private. I don't even know what the name for them anymore.
Newspaper?
The newspaper, Global, Global Newspaper kind of thing?
The Global Newspaper, they're private, they run, they're not allowed.
Well, there's like, there's the parallel mosquito.
Also going to be asked by the Lincoln Review, which is a private publication, on what's going on with regard to Minuteman and the public town meeting on articles.
Yeah. That's all private. We're talking about the school newsletter.
I don't know what's private, what's not private, but... It depends upon how I'm working, really, just what I'm taking in position.
Not really. That's not what we would consider. We don't care if you say, "Vote for or vote against." The court has determined that even objective material being distributed unsolicited is prohibited. What we would be looking for is what the vehicle is. If it's a school newsletter, no go. If it's the Lincoln Squirrel, go for it.
That was what I was gonna ask, because if we have a member of the press here tonight, and you might have a couple of different members of the press here. And so they're reporting in a local newspaper, and so that is not considered a violation. They're reporting on conversations, votes, actions.
I should be very, very clear. When I say newsletter, I'm talking about the school newsletter, right? I'm not talking about free press.
Could I, that's a question that they, we keep sort of running around this. Where we are in our process, we're still a year away from putting something on town meeting warrants, and we don't know which communities, we assume that many will, but which communities will make it an override question? How much of this applies to us now today, and where, when, would we know what kicks in?
It applies to you. Yeah, as a, it applies to you now. Things we're really talking about right now, apply. So just a couple of examples, we have these cases pour in all the time, so I just grabbed a few cases. A public school teacher was asked to distribute a notice to students regarding a formation of this provided point of contact. So a vote yes group was forming, and they wanted members. And so they privately printed out some flyers and said, "Hey, can you just, can you just put these in the backpacks, just let parents know that we're forming a group, if they wanna join us, they can." Or often determine that that was prohibited, is the use of public resources, teachers on the clock distributing for a political purpose. Superintendent used public email to send a message to parents attending the public schools regarding an override. That happens frequently. In fact, right now, we're looking at a situation where that happened. Yes?
So what if that superintendent used an email, a blind copy, you know, that just says email to himself, there is a blind copy of five hundred people on it?
Then one of those five hundred people who don't want to pay higher taxes will report it to OCPF. We call it the superintendent, say, "Who did you send it to?", and they, they don't lie. "Well, we sent it to this, this is the five hundred people." And then, and then we resolve it somewhere.
Well, you did say he could report on where the, the date of the election and where it was gonna be to send.
Time, date, place. And before you distribute something like that, either by robocall or email, get the green light from OCPF. The school department used public funds to produce and distribute two newsletters. We already talked about the newsletter issue. Public employees during the workday placed address labels on campaign envelopes. So that's, you know, that could be the school teachers, you know, helping the vote yes during the school day, that'd be a problem. The youth services van, I don't know if you have school vans, but maybe on election day, the teachers say, "You know what, we have to pass, let's do it." So we yell at the students in the vans, and you take them out into the polling areas to hold vote yes signs. That'd be prohibited, that happened. So those are some real examples, just to kind of give you the feel of it. That is the Anderson portion of it. Any questions at all about that? Alright, let's get into the ballot question committee. I'll just briefly state this, because I don't know if any of you are gonna be involved with it, but I just wanna give you a basic overview on how this works. To create a ballot question committee, it takes two people, a chairman and a treasurer. To create a ballot question committee, it takes, uh, two people, a chairman and a treasurer, and they have to fill out a one-page form called an M101. So there could be several ballot question committees, you know, each little town could have their own little Vote Yes Committee if they would like. They have to take this 101 form, and, uh, they would present it to all 16 communities, they'd make an original, they file it here in Lexington, where the school exists on property, Lexington property, and then copies in all the other towns. And that's how a school committee, um, uh, that's how a ballot question committee organizes.
And has to do that to the other?
Yes, all 16, that's right.
Wha- wha- what is the, the ballot question in an override in a particular community? Why would you have to file with any other community?
Uh, those are the rules that are spelled out in our interpretative policy. So it's all 16 towns, that's rare, I, I was shocked when I found out there were 16 communities, usually it's like two or three or four, uh, that we deal with, but if there's a, if there is a, a ballot question committee that forms, goes to all 16.
And those two people do not need to be registered voters in the community where they initially filed?
That's right. They could be from California. Disclosure, ballot question, so the disclosure of ballot question committees, when they, when these ballot question committees, the Vote Yes or the Vote No group, when they start to raise money, they're going to get the names and addresses of all donors, from dollar one, so it's name and residential address, if it's a contribution of 200 or more, occupation and employer as well. So they'll be collecting all of this information, a lot of times, we get the question, well, what about like, if we have a spaghetti supper, people are paying cash, someone should still be able to get names and addresses of all the donors. Um, there are no limits, it's not like the candidate limit, where it's $1,000 a year, um, uh, there is no limit for the ballot question committee, unlimited funds, and, um, and it can also come from any groups or organizations. For example, if I'm a candidate, I'd be prohibited from taking a thousand dollars from, uh, the Boy Scouts of Lincoln, um, because it's likely that they have corporate money in their general treasuries, you know, if they, if they sell any advertising for one of their events, their, their pot's sort of tainted, but they can give to ballot question committees, that's no problem. So, these ballot question committees can take money from corporations, groups, super PACs, doesn't matter, they can take the money, and they can use it to support or oppose a ballot question. Um, when are these reports due? They're due eight days before the election, 30 days afterward, and then if they aren't dissolved yet, at year end, they should be dissolved by 30 days afterward. If they're not, then they should try and resolve as soon as possible. So, money's being raised, being spent, all of this information, we put a campaign finance report, and it'll be filed in the 16 different towns. Um, an original copy here in, um, where are we? Uh, here in Lexington. Um, the last bullet there, it says $250, the M22, this is just for your information, but i- if a group out there, like a corporation, or, uh, maybe a, maybe the, the Lions Club or something, and they, they go out, and they independent, they spend money to support or oppose the group, and they file something called an M22, so that's where you would expect to see something like that. These reports, when they're handed into the clerks, if they exceed a thousand dollars in activity, that'll be posted up to the website, so you can expect them to be posted on municipal websites, uh, as these, uh, reports are filed. Any question at all about how, disclosure for the ballot question committee?
Well, right now, I'm sorry, th- those M22s, is that the, at the option of town clerk proposing, or is that a requirement?
It's a, it's a requirement for any, for activity of a thousand dollars or more. Okay, resolving Anderson cases, we're almost done, I know we're running a little bit over. All right. If you wa- read through the campaign finance law, there's scary language about jail time and massive fines. Uh, we're not in the business of sending people to jail, um, it's happened twice. Um, but we, but we do get these complaints, these complaints pour in, how do we resolve them? We usually resolve them through something called a public resolution letter. This letter says, you messed up, um, the superintendent sent out a newsletter, uh, column in the newsletter saying, you know, vote yes in the override, uh, it cost $3,000, some sort of resolution would come about, um, it would, uh, our, our office would contact you, you, and then we'd come to some resolution, it'd be put in a letter, then it's done, it's done informally, we're not going forward judges, um, uh, and, and then it's, uh, it's done for you. This is where our public resolution letters are listed, as you can see, you can see a lot of, a lot of more candidate stuff, um, a lot of Section 13 stuff, that's the public employee, uh, you know, public employees soliciting or receiving. Um, I'm just gonna click the Marshfield School Department one, that happens to be an Anderson case. In Marshfield, the school building committee, as you can see there, approved the appropriation of town funds for $10,000 to produce and distribute a brochure regarding the proposed new high school. That's prohibited, as we all have just learned over the last 40 minutes, um, so how do we resolve it? Um, through communications with the town, um, uh, thousand, uh, we, the school building committee did, uh, agreed to make a $1,000 payment, and so, I think what it did was, I think there were 10 members, and each member paid a hundred dollars. Um, so that's one way to resolve things, just informally with a letter, that's out of Marshfield. Um, if it's a little more serious, we might do something called a disposition agreement. A disposition agreement is an actual, you actually come into our office, a document is signed, usually a larger penalty is paid for Anderson cases, that almost never happens, uh, it's almost always done with a public resolution letter. Then finally, we can refer a case to the attorney general for possible criminal charges. Um, that's, that's pretty rare, but it happens from time to time. Two people have gone to jail for campaign finances, just quickly. Um, one, John Bonomo, he's a candidate, he was desperate for money personally, he stole more than a hundred thousand dollars, he ended up doing two and a half years. And then another guy out of Chelsea, he ran the Chelsea Housing Authority, but he basically used it as a campaign office for various candidates, he did six months, uh, for Section 13, uh, the public employees issues that we were talking about. The point here is that complaints are constantly coming into our office, we're dealing with thousands of committees on a state and local level, and, um, and these ballot questions are happening everywhere, and I complained to two at times when we went before a judge and people went to jail. We're not a gotcha agency, we're gonna get complaints, we're gonna call you up, we'll try and resolve it on an informal PRL level, uh, that's just one of the points I wanted to get across there. Um, this is our website, the OCPF website, it's at ocf.us, and, uh, I see that you already have the guide, and you have the ballot question guide, that has a lot of helpful information, uh, but you can find a lot of good information here on our website, and please just make sure you call us if anything comes up. Any final questions at all?
Thank you. Thank you for a very, very clear and efficient speech, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. You're welcome. All right, by the way, I was at the School Building Authority, um, today, doing the same exact thing, and when I told about going to Lexington tonight, I was giving it to a bunch of architects and the program managers, they started salivating at another potential job. They called me, you're already, you're people looking for work.
Yes.
This is not mine.
Don't be disappointed.
All right, so, are we going to be?
Yes.
So Ford, do you have a presentation as well, or Nancy?
Well, Nancy's gonna do a presentation, but I don't know which you wanna get out of this, part of this guy.
Well, there, uh, so far, we have not had any, um, opportunity to ask questions about the options, and I, I personally sent you a number of questions about it, which, because we asked last time we were talking, we decided, um, that we're gonna have this additional meeting, and that people, if they had specific questions, because we didn't have time last, we would just present the information, should send the questions in, and receive some questions from me, and maybe from some others, that hopefully some thoughts have given towards this will be given through the future. So I think that, um, if you have the answer to those questions, I just would like to hear it, and I'm sure that other people would have.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do the presentation? We'll do what we did last night, go through the presentation.
Which has changed since last time.
Oh, yeah, it's changed a lot. Um, so we'll go through that, uh, and then we'll just take questions and all that. What we're requesting from all of our community meetings is, is that people put their questions away, we're accumulating these questions, we're gonna have a Q and A, which would be on the website, so that's gonna be an important factor. I wanna add just one other thing, is, is we have community meetings set up, um, they are set up in all communities except Lancaster, and I understand maybe it's gonna be October 6th, it's, uh, they look like they're gonna be April 6th. Belmont, we've not heard of them, and Wayne, we've not heard of them, but everybody else has set up meetings, and they're all gonna be done by the, and last night, last night we had a meeting in Acton, that's Nancy, and it was very well done, about 24 people, um, and, uh, we, they all filled out surveys, used that information, we're gonna collect all that information eventually in some kind of a school committee, but, uh, so, these community meetings are extremely important, and the purpose of them is, is to ask, we want your input from the community, your questions, your concerns, let us know, but we need to have the right angles.
And I wanna thank Ford especially for coming in tonight when he feels, like, crap involved, great. So I have to go back in a second.
Okay. Okay, so my name is Nancy Banks, and I'm the Acton School representative, um, the Acton representative to the Minuteman School Committee, and tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the, um, Minuteman High School building project that is, um, being developed. And, um, so, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to get your feedback on the options that we're going to discuss, and we, um, at the end of the meeting, we'll have, um, survey forms that we will ask you to fill out, um, to give us your comments on the proposals, and we also have index cards, and you can ask additional questions. But before I get to that part, I'm going to give you some information about where we are, and, um, I'm gonna give you some information. So first, I'm gonna talk about who is the Minuteman Regional School Committee, why we need to act, what we've done, look at our options, what's it gonna cost you, and why act now, and then finally, get a chance for you to participate and give your answers, to, uh, give you us feedback. So who are we? We are the Minuteman Regional, uh, School Committee, we are the Minuteman Regional School District, um, we are a public high school, and we provide experiential learning for our students. At the same time, we also offer rigorous academic courses, including advanced placement of courses, um, in addition.
Does anyone have a Nissan Murano?
Yeah.
Lights are on.
The, um, we offer, in addition to academics, we offer industry-supported career technical education in 19 career majors, and in many areas, our students earn professional certifications as well as being able to participate in sports, arts, and drama. The, um, Minuteman students are required to pass the MCAS test in the same way that the students who go to the academic, um, high schools, and 65% of our graduates go on to college, 33% have careers. There are 16 major communities in the Minuteman District, of course, I can't list them all, but, um, the, um, and, um, we began, um, operation in 1972, which speaks to why we need to act now. The, so, oh, right, so speaks, and so now we're going to t- give you a video of why we need to act now.
Our facility doesn't have the flexibility, it doesn't have the infrastructure, and in some cases, it's detrimental to what we're trying to teach our kids right now.
Air quality, HVAC, the electrical system is not up to code, the plumbing system is not up to code.
It's not ACA compliant, there's poor ventilation, poor lighting, uh, if you look at the problems with the physical, you know, building in terms of walls, windows, roofs, uh, there's other, it's energy, uh, consumption is way above what it should be.
Down in the trade hall, they have walls that don't fully reach the ceiling, so there's a lot of echoing, and it's hard to hear in there, and I know environmental science and technology is on the third floor, which makes it very difficult for us to carry stuff up and down the stairs.
We have basically six levels to this building, it's spread across 330,000 square feet.
It's like a base, it's confusing, it's all up and down.
There's at least six tarps and probably seven five-gallon buckets hanging from the rafters to catch the leaks, so they don't come down onto the gym floor, so the students don't slip during gym classes, boarding events.
We have other, um, areas of the building where there simply isn't enough natural light.
There's not many windows around here, it's almost like a jail cell, but I think they have more windows than he do.
We have a building that's stuck in 1975.
If the building were to be improved, and then the programs could improve even more so than they already are, I think that it would help, because the towns could send more kids here, and the kids could get, like, a much better experience.
We have a duty to provide to our students, our kids, our grandkids, a 21st century learning environment, just like they would have if this school sat in your town.
We want a building that honors unique and varied learning styles of our children.
If you don't do anything, you're saying we're not gonna fulfill on, uh, our commitment and endorsement from the school committee on the educational program and specifications, that we're not gonna take care of our building, that we're not invested in the future of
So that gives you an overview of current building conditions, why we need to act, current building conditions, conditions demanded, the building is in desperate need of repair. The second reason is that the building as it was built just does not meet the educational needs, um, that the students have. You know, many communities have had the same experience, schools that were built long ago that have not met the test of time, and this is unfortunately one of those buildings. Um, other buildings were designed to meet continuing educational needs, but this does not, and most critically, is that our accreditation is in jeopardy, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but that's a very key issue. Am I? What? Yep, oh, uh, the, uh, so we talk about the current building conditions, and the video, Dana listed some of the very specific things, but they run the whole range of, uh, building issues, structural design code, there's problems with the roof, the electrical systems, plumbing, as well as numerous code violations. Um, and if you just, um, entered the building, the first thing you see when you enter the building is this huge staircase, which certainly doesn't make it very accessible for, um, children who might have some accessibility issues. The, um, so we have, based on existing, um, engineering reports, determined that roughly a hundred million dollars is needed just to keep the operational, a building operational. In addition, there's a point at which you put so much money into a building, that, um, then, once you've done a level of repair, then you reach a tipping point where you now have to meet, um, current codes, we're grandfathered in on some codes in this building, but based on the level of repair we did, we could find ourselves not grandfathered in and actually having to meet new code requirements. So these are some pictures which display some of the problems with the buildings, you can see the parking lot problems, um, the broken sidewalks, the tennis courts which are cracked, the, um, you can see the cracks all between the windows and, um, you know, water guards, how the doors are not leak-proof, uh, the roof, um, has, um, a number of issues that's been patched, but, um, obviously needs to be replaced, having been around for 30 years, um, and, uh, continues to deteriorate, as, uh, was evidenced by, uh, in the video, the description of, uh, what we have to do to keep the gym floor clean, um, free of water for the students. Um, accessibility issues, we don't have doors that are very good for, um, students who are in a wheelchair, um, also lots and lots of stairs in our buildings, not sure I knew what that was, but.
Electrical.
Electrical. Um, and more mechanical, and you can just see the age, the deterioration that has taken place in the building, um, you can see that there's just not, um, appropriate space for safety equipment, and that the ductwork is, is really, uh, being repaired.
Nancy, one thing that we didn't, I wanted to point out, that last picture.
Yep.
There's an emergency exit behind that.
Oh, really? Oh, that's right. Ah, yes. So, um, so the second reason that we are looking, um, to, um, update the building is to meet the needs of the Career Academy. The, uh, Career Academy means that we will be integrating, um, vocational education with epidemic, and so it means that we need to have, uh, space that allows that to take place, it also means that we need to have, um, vocational space that meets the needs for different kinds of programs, um, and we'll talk a little bit more about that.
We've spent probably hundreds of hours together in groups as a whole staff, identifying the key components of an academy model for Minuteman, and what they are is... And what they are is two academies that are formed around the occupational programming that we offer. We have a life sciences academy and an engineering, construction, and trades academy. And then shared resources in both of those houses. That academy model integrates curriculum in a way that simply can't be done in the building that we have right now.
This building was built in the 1970s on an open school concept. It was not built as the educational program is designed to bring collaboration among the academies.
Just think about an academy for a moment. We have vocational, technical teachers, and then we have academic teachers who teach their academics related to those subject areas from a career and vocational, technical point of view. So we have math that's being taught in carpentry class, in a way that's relevant to carpentry students. We have science and physics being taught to the biotechnology, to the engineering, to the robotics students in a way that's related to those occupational areas. So when you have a staff that's integrated like that in an academy model, it allows them a lot of flexibility, not just in how things are taught, but in when they're taught and where they're taught. We're no longer bound by the walls of the classroom. And as we get closer to it and people begin to study the model, we're seeing even more and more potential benefits of this academy model to serve our 16 member towns.
Since I came here, I know exactly what I want to do, I fell in love with something that I'm ready to take on as a real career, and I've learned so much more than I would ever learn in a classroom. You're ready for college, you're more ready for college than you are if you went to a regular high school.
Minuteman has a great program and they're known all over for their program, but the issue is that the building is a problem.
So as was noted, the building was designed in 1970 as an open classroom design that is no longer a design that people consider a good design for education. And it was not, it was not designed for the current, what we're looking for in terms of vocational and academic programs being separated. And now we would like to have the opportunity to bring those two needs together. The, and equally importantly, mechanical and electrical infrastructure does not support the technology needs, which, so that will, is something that we're looking to do. As I indicated, that the building was designed to separate academic disciplines, isolate the career and technical programs. We don't believe that's a model going forward, and so it just simply is not designed for 21st century education. This is a little bit, a display shows you what the academy model looks like. Life and services academy will have, will be one grouping, and then there'll be an engineering, construction, trades academy, and then they'll have the shared programs which are listed here. So you can see what is envisioned to be in each of the academies. Over time, this will change to meet changing demands, and then what will be in the shared house. So the other issue that I mentioned earlier, but dealt with the accreditation. All high schools are accredited by the National Association of Schools and Colleges. When they did our accreditation in December of 2012, we were put on warning solely because of the condition of this building. And we were required, in order to keep our accreditation, to provide updates as to what we are doing to address this issue. So the school has to, this is not an issue of a do-nothing program, we have to do something to address these accreditation issues. So what we have done, in 2009, we launched an MSBA feasibility study, we entered into the MSBA process, we formed a school building committee under the leadership of Ford Spalding, hired consultants. And in 2014, we were granted our final extension by MSBA to 2016. And this is very critical. One, we're not going to be granted another extension, that is not going to happen. We had been in the process a long time and the MSBA made clear that this was final. And that's critical because it will affect our reimbursement, which I will talk about in a moment. And in 2015, we released the preliminary cost estimates, which we will talk about in a minute. So what we have done as part of this MSBA project is, one, we have approved the traditional program. We've approved an enrollment of 628 students. This is kind of in a traditional, non-regional school, you know how many students you have, but in a school such as Minuteman, we actually had to look at the class that we thought we should design a school for. So this number is based on both the number of students that we believe our member communities can provide to the students with some non-member students, but also as a reasonable-sized school and can work as a school. We have resolved in our program to increase member town enrollment, we have researched the building options, the ones that you are being presented with from a longer list, and we've locked in this 40% MSBA rate. If we do not go forward with the MSBA rate, we will lose that rate and it will be, if we ever are accepted again, it will be at the 31%. And finally, we've looked at Plan B, which is if we don't go forward with the MSBA project, what will those repairs to bring in the accreditation be? What we will now need to do. So these are the options. First, the state-funded options. Option one is renovation of the existing building. 40% state funding, we can retain the heating and cooling systems that were installed in the building five years ago, and partially achieve our career model. The downsides is that this will have to be done while the students are in the building, and it will definitely disrupt classes and student convenience. So that is option one, renovation of the existing building. Option two is renovation. So this shows a map that points out the current building, it's in the town of Lexington. The building is currently ceded in Lexington, for those of you who are not familiar with the site, the site that we actually own sits in both Lincoln and Lexington. Option two is renovation addition. This particular case, again, we get our 40% state funding, we can achieve, fully achieve the career academy model. Some demolition, demolition of the building and of this, and that is not clear if the demolition would be covered under state funding. And this shows what the building, the footprint would remain in Lexington, but you can see that there's some additional space on the left-hand side to accommodate the new addition. And rendering of what that might look like. And option three of the state-funded options is that we build a new school. And this, the benefits to this are, one, that we would have a school that fully meets what is needed, has minimal class disruption, and can be done in the shortest amount of time. We do have the possible demolition of the existing building. In there, although perhaps there might be some other options that we will consider when we get closer to that date. This, in this particular scenario, now the school moves over to the Lincoln side of the property, and the location of the current school becomes the plan fields. And another rendering of what the building would look like. Plan B is the self-funded, non-MSBA options. And there are two of those. Option four is repairs with educational improvements. So this would have us doing somewhat more than the absolute minimum, so that we can support some of the career academy. And again, it has, it's not reimbursable by MSBA, the work will extend over a very long duration. And also has some uncertain cost escalation because of the long timeline, which is going to be, would have to be accomplished. And option five is the lowest cost, construction cost, which address only the critical repairs that are needed. Again, not reimbursable by MSBA, and will take place over a long period of time as we get various engineering projects. And again, could trigger some code compliance issues depending on the magnitude of repairs that- So these are what the preliminary cost estimates are. I mean, you stress preliminary, but they provide for you a comparison of what the, of magnitude of the cost elements. So if we went with option one, renovation, the total cost would be $176.5 million with a district share of $105, and a project duration of five years. The rent option two is about a similar cost of $175.3 million with a district share of $105 million and a shorter duration, and this is because some of the work can be done while the students, while the students are there, because we're talking about an addition and all of that work can be done while the students are in the building. Option three is $144.9 million with a district share of 86. And the reason that it is lower is because you don't have to deal with the complexity of renovation, and it has a shorter timeline of 2.75 years. The two non-SBA projects, we estimate at $198 million for the repairs with some partial educational program improvements, at $100 million without the educational improvements. And we estimate that that would take place over 10 years. And this is what the estimated cost would be to the town of Acton. The annual cost, based on a three-year bond, would be, would range from a low of $265,000 to a high of $323,000. And on the last column, you can see what the impacts would be to median homeowner.
And that's under the current regional agreement?
Under the current regional agreement. Under the revised regional agreement, the cost remained the same, but the, the, actually the cost don't remain, I said that wrong. I didn't say cost total. Total cost remains the same, but the current agreement. And the projected cost to the town if the regional agreement that we approved at our town meeting last year is approved by all 16 communities. And you can see that there would be a slight drop in projected annual cost to median homeowners to the median homeowner in Acton. Wait, sorry, pushing the wrong button here. Can we do nothing? You know, as I indicated at the beginning, there is not a do-nothing project, option on this. We have, and the reason for that is twofold. One is that the accreditation of the school is at risk, and two, that the building simply is falling apart and needs to be repaired. So that there are, so there's really a range of work that has to be done. We have put off repairs that were not critical during the last few years, knowing that this project was coming online. So there is a backlog of work that definitely needs to be done to the building. The next steps on this project are that during April, during March and April, the school committee members and the building committee members will be visiting all 16 towns to get input as to what people's reaction are to the proposals. In May, the school committee will vote on its preferred option and send it to the MSBA. Unfortunately, it's not really what we vote that gets approved, but the MSBA wants to know what our recommendation is. Actually, they will sort what the option is that we move forward on. Based, the assumption is they will rely heavily on the input, and one of the inputs that they expected was that we would go out and reach out to our communities to get their opinion as well, which is one of the reasons we're having these meetings. The schematic design will, designs will develop once that option has been approved. And it's at next year's town meeting that you will be asked to approve the building plan. Once those have, that approval has been done, the construction documents will begin, and in 2018, we will begin construction on whatever has been approved. So we need to act because we need to address the safety of the building, we need to create a school that meets the needs of the students, and we need to address the accreditation issues. And we have to act now to preserve a 40% funding. We have only till June 30th of 2016 to do that. And if we get out of the MSBA pipeline, it's really hard to believe that we're going to get back in, but even if we did get back in, we'd get back in at the current reimbursement rates. So now, it's time for your feedback.
Great job. Do you all think you could do as well?
There are a couple more slides.
Yeah, but, so, so what's going to happen is, so we need to say, I guess we're allowed to say that because we're the people doing this presentation, the, and fill out the form. So then, what we did in Acton was we had time for questions. There was, and I have to say, there was four of us there, so Ford, Steve, and Kevin. And I would say there were such a wide range of questions. And we needed all four of us there to answer the questions. So, not that we're going to be able to, but it will be a challenge.
So who wants to take some questions? Who wants to be in charge of, Ford, do you want to take the question?
Just follow along.
Here we go. Hey, we'll start with Dave.
A couple of times on the presentation, Nancy, if I may ask, and Ford, there was one spot where you said if one town did not support it, we would lose the project, and then later on, you said we have to have all 16 towns approve the project.
I don't remember saying it, because I don't, actually, somebody asked me after the meeting last night if all 16 towns had to approve the project, and I actually don't know the answer.
The answer is yes. I don't believe you said it. All of the, if 16 towns do not approve the preferred option that we select and that we go to work on, then we are going to be left with having to repair it on our own.
And the reason why is that the district cannot issue debt, and we can't do the project without debt. The district cannot issue debt unless all 16 town meetings are approved.
Under both agreements, either agreement.
We start building, and you back a little further.
I failed to find that in the current regional agreement. Is that in the new regional agreement, the revised regional agreement?
It's in the current.
It's in the current, oh yeah, definitely in the current.
Your dad only required a two-thirds vote.
The school committee versus the town meetings requires a majority vote in all 16 town meetings under the current agreement.
Okay.
It's less than a 100% vote from the school committee to send it to the town meetings.
So I have one question, actually I have seven, I'll start with one. What is evidence, the evidence, that the cost of this proposed building is in line with recent similar projects? And how best to measure the relative cost of the projects? Because you give me this, I've heard a square foot number or whatever, I don't understand.
Mary Ann, you might be able to-
Yeah, first of all, it is because we're able to rely on looking at information at other schools. If you look at Essex Aggie, there was a new school, it was built three years ago, it was $120 million. If you-
Yeah, you should, you should come up here, we'd like to see you. You were a film star a few minutes ago.
No, I'm trying to keep a low profile.
Is your publicist okay if you-
There was a new school built in Potnem, for Potnem, five years ago, and that was $112 million. We have information from other projects like the Riffey project in Assabed, a Brino addition in Baytown, which is really half, which was $80 million. And they were in better shape than Minuteman. And our design team can attest to that because they worked on that project. So every building is different, they have their own unique challenges. It'd be sort of like saying all houses are the same, they're not. And if they're shaped differently, they might have different- And they're shaped differently, they might have different floor plates. Minuteman has different levels. They might have different floor to ceiling heights. So all of those things, different circulation. With Minuteman, it creates greater accessibility challenges, things like that. Lot of seismic issues with this building because of the era it was built and it was not built as designed. And that has come up, that issue has come up on half a dozen other smaller projects that were conducted and then it was verified that it's the as-built drawings and this isn't what we have here. So, so to answer your question, the costs are in line with what we see. If you take some of these projects and you look at the time that it was built and escalated to future value, present value, the future value of one of the construction project could actually take place. These, these numbers are in line.
But how do you measure it? It's not the cost of the entire building because some buildings may be much bigger than others. Do you, you know, you may have, you know, twice as many students, you'd expect it to cost more.
Well, with the Mass School Building Authority, they have the space summary. And you stock up the space summary and you're allowed X amount of square feet per student based on the number of students.
So do you measure these by square feet, relative cost?
We measure it by square feet, the type of program space, not all spaces are created equal.
And if you have similar square footage and similar program needs, that both costs are in line for the new construction, complete new building, that would be in line? And that can be demonstrated fairly easily?
Correct.
And the fact that the, you know, it's a little bit of a surprise that the renovation cost would be as high as it was, in fact. Yeah, so, because we had a few numbers in our long way that we were playing with and the final number turned out to be fairly high. So is there anything about the Minuteman building, I mean, oh, you mentioned a few things, that makes its renovation cost so high? Or its repair cost with that hundred? So I'm trying to figure out, is that people can look at these numbers and say, I understand a little bit about this because I've been in it before, in it before. But the new building is cheaper than renovating and cheaper for our, you know, taking into account the money we get from the state than just doing repairs. And, and can we justify it with facts so that people will not just think that we're trying to steer them to a particular answer? Is there some simple document we could just put up there and say, yeah, we vetted these and here's the proof as to each of these cost options? And it just happens because of the nature of the building or the site or whatever, that the least expensive option for you is a new building. So do we have simple evidence of that that we could?
Yes.
Give to people?
Yes. And have they been creating another document for them to look at? But if you're going to renovate three hundred and thirty thousands square feet, okay, versus build two hundred and forty thousand square feet new. First of all, you're, you're renovating much more square footage than what you're building new. If you look at the condition of the existing building, okay, that you would have to reconfigure the structure because we have these six levels. It's not like renovating a building where it was a two-story building and pretty clear is one, two. So the accessibility challenges are there.
So my, my.
And also the contingency costs.
The contingency costs.
Because you don't know what's behind these walls.
And the escalation because when you have.
Could be the body's fault.
When you have a school that's occupied, you're conducting a phased occupied construction project. So what you're doing is you're carving out a little bit of space, which is inefficient because there's like piecemeal projects. Okay, so it's going to take place over a longer period of time. You can't just take over a floor of a building and displace the students, the teachers, take systems offline like the electrical, et cetera. You have to do it in discreet pieces. It's no different than in a hospital. They have these little projects that go on in hospitals and they cost a lot of money because you're in an occupied building and you're trying to keep everything else operational. And if you're doing all these little, there's an inefficiency. If, if you were to go and, you know, look at, look at your, you know, look at a renovation in your home as an example. If, if you were to take out one window, you know, replace the windows in one room and then the next summer come back and replace the windows in the next room. And you did that in every room in your house, okay? What do you think, how much money do you think it would cost that if you had a fifteen-room house? There's fifteen remobilizations versus maybe doing it over the summer, one mobilization. You know what the present value of the dollars are, you know what your labor resources are. You're not dealing with unknowns in the future. How's the economy going to be?
I would strongly recommend that there be a brief document, doesn't have to be a very long and technical one. Because I know that this question is going to come up when they look at the numbers. And I know also that there's a, a good explanation for it because I have a little bit of experience with this. So I would suggest to eliminate that line of questions, that a short document be prepared, not too technical. I think that would be grateful, that'd be very, very helpful in letting people understand this. And by the way, when Ford has a concern about what they're going to find behind the walls, I don't want to get anybody nervous, but I've heard that they found ex-school committee members behind the walls. It is not surprising. I think that actually, Jeff, did you, was your hand down?
I'll, I'll, okay.
Just one comment to echo you, Jeff. I, I think the, the existing non-building option where they refer people to the exhibits, I printed out those exhibits and it's that thick a pile of paper. I think it's critical to reduce that down for the exact reason that Jeff said. I think people in my community, if you go there with numbers that lead you to the new building, they're going to be skeptical that they're being walked down a path. We need to make sure that we have good justification for that.
I would like to respond to your comments as well to say that, first of all, the Mass School Building Authority, it's a grant program. They're smart people. They have industry professionals that work there. If we were trying to point them or, you know, propose something that isn't the case, they, they have their own architects and engineers that are going to look at the proposals. The reason why the Mass School Building Authority has final say in the preferred solution is that they want to know you did a true.